Good evening. The City of Riverbank City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M. Please rise.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come before you this evening and we're so thankful and grateful for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, we thank you for this platform where we have an opportunity to share our concerns. And Lord, it's not just a place for our voices to, that we have the ability to say something, but Lord, we know that we're heard, we are heard here. And I, I know, and I want to thank you for this great council and this, the city staff that's before us, Lord, and helping us, Lord, and advocate for us, Lord, that as moving forward, that Lord Jesus is this place, Riverbank, California will be a great place to live. Lord, I thank you for the presentations tonight. Lord, I just pray that as we honor each one, that God you would be glorified. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here. Agenda changes. Today, we're going to have, I'm going to allow nine minutes of public comment at the beginning, and all others can have public comments when we do comments at the end of the meeting. Any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered or is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we have a lot of presentations. The first one is Proclamation Older Americans Month.
Yeah, let's go on down. And I'm old, so I may not be able to give back.
I know, I know. All right, Mr. Dynan and everyone here for the older Americans. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Older American Month, whereas the City of Riverbank includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute to strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome, included, and supported. And whereas the City of Riverbank recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services that support older Americans needed to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas the City of Riverbank can work to build an even better community for older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities that are responsive to individual needs, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Whereas the opportunity and challenges that await us require our continued commitment to the goal of ensuring that our senior citizens enjoy active, productive, and healthy lives, and to do so independently, safely, and with dignity. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim May two thousand and twenty-three to be Older American Month, and urges every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts and support older Americans' choices about how they age in their community. Sign today. Mr. Dynan?
I'm going to let you say a couple of words, but Mr. Dynan is on our planning commission, one of our, you're not the chair this time, but finding commissioner for what, eight years, five and a half? It does, it does. So, Mr. Dynan, thank you for your contributions, and if you want to say a few things.
Okay, okay. So we're going to take. Okay, so I wanted to do, so my nominee is Thelma Louise Gibson, and I wanted to do her right by just writing a couple remarks. Because sometimes I tend to, tend to ramble, and I wanted to make sure that she was honored. So Thelma's, whom I met during COVID-nineteen pandemic while assisting our homeless population is a remarkable person. She grew up in the area, started from humble beginnings on a dairy farm, like, like she quoted, with just one cow and three chickens. She later met her husband Larry Wayne Gibson, who was a sergeant in the army. And together, they raised two daughters and two sons. And although one of her sons is no longer with us, Thelma and her family are incredibly, incredibly proud of what they have accomplished and how much they have given back to the community. And Larry, who is also no longer with us, his memory lives on through Thelma's dedication to others. Thelma has created a strong bond with our homeless population, and she is the go-to person for anyone in need in the city. Her dedication and selflessness have not gone unnoticed, and now she has taken on an additional role as a member of American Veterans First Organization, who, which are here representing as well, and supporting, where she is helping veterans in need. Thelma truly exemplifies what it means to give back to the community. And she has built a great relationship with the city and its staff. So it is with great honor gratitude that we recognize Thelma for all that she has done, her tireless efforts and commitments to helping others have made a significant impact in the, on the lives of countless individuals. So Thelma, thank you for your service, your kindness, and unwavering dedication to the betterment of the art community. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words.
I'm pretty humbled right now. This is really kind of overwhelming. So I'd first like to say thank you, Mayor O'Brien, and City of Riverbank here, the comrades have. Anyway, upon growing up, yes, a small little dairy girl. I always looked at other people that, that were bullied at times, and I wanted to help them. I got beat up in the third grade because I wanted this girl to be able to cross the road, and these girls were picking on her, and they wouldn't let her go. And the reason I wanted her to cross the road, because I didn't know my way home. I followed her. So I went over and I said, let her go. And they said, is she your friend? I said, she is. And I go, let her go. And they was hitting on her. I said, run, Linda, run. And so she ran, and they took me down. They beat me up pretty bad. My oldest sister came along, so she pulled me up, pulled the girls off of me, what's going on? I said, I just wanted to follow Linda home. So because my sisters and brothers never walked me. I was just, I was the youngest, and I was in the third grade at that time. But anyway, I always had this wanting to help others. I was a baseball coach. I started playing baseball. And I wanted to, we had no baseball teams for the little girls in grammar school. They were in the second, third, and fourth grade. So I went over to the school and let them know that I'd like to become coach of these little girls. So I took the girls from the second, third, and fourth grade all the way through the eighth grade. Then they continued on. They were headed to high school, and the high school called me and asked me if I would come and, and be a coach there because we had made the newspaper quite a bit. We'd done really good. They brought in many, many trophies. We took them out and about and around everywhere. Mickey's Grove, the, the lakes. We took them to America, I don't know, the parks and scheme stuff. But anyway, when the school called, I said, no, I think I'm going to retire now. I said, it's been a long go, these little girls. I said, they graduated, I'm quit waiting. So, but I still continued on as my adulthood of playing baseball. And like I said, every time I seen someone in need, I wanted to just pull over and help. I seen so many homeless people during the time I would shop over in Modesto. I would stop, I'd go in the store. They'd be sitting there, and I'd go in the store, and I'd come back out, and I would give them something. You know, cookies, sandwich, whatever I had bought into the store, I'd come out and give it to them. And then I was administrator of our church, Pentecostal Church here in Riverbank. I was the food administrator for about close to four years. And things started happening. They just weren't right. That's okay, because, you know, it's all in God's hands. So I would sit in the church pew, and I would pray, and I'd say, Lord, is there something else that you would have me to do? Use me, Lord, I'm an open vessel. And I prayed that several times, upon entering church on Sunday mornings, I would sit there. Well, Lord, and behold, the Lord woke me up. We hours of the morning, about three o'clock in the morning, and he said, rise. And I said, who is that? Who's talking to me? And he said, rise again. So I said, Lord, is that you? Because I never really heard that type of a voice before. That was first actual, actual time that I could hear the little voice. So I rose, and he said, take care of my people. Something big is coming. And I need you to take care of them because they're going to be the least, and they're going to be left behind. I said, Lord, I don't understand. And he said, you take care. So he gave me visions. I started seeing the parks. I started seeing the rivers. And as this was going around different places, I said, Lord, I know where that is. That's right here in my home community. And he said, take care of them. They're the least. They're my children. I love them. You let them know about me. And I said, yes, sir, I will. So I still didn't understand. That morning, Reverend Charles Neal and his wife Shirley, right here in the front row, they had showed up. I forget why they came over, but I was out in the middle of the road already jumping up and down. I said, you're not going to believe what happened to me. And I, I explained in, to Charles, and I said, I said, the Lord said to go because something big is going to happen. So I went to their meeting. He invited me to the, to the church meeting. And I wanted to figure it out, so I wanted our, you know, members there to help me cipher what the Lord had just said. And one of them said, I think there's going to be a revival. And I remember looking, I said, but doesn't the revival start in us? And I didn't see a church into this vision. So it really got to me, but I still went around and, and was feeding the people. And, and then six weeks later, the vision was revealed. That coronavirus hit, and it hit us hard. The churches, restaurants, schools, they were all closing down. So yes, the homeless, the least, had nowhere to go. But I was already feeding them. We had received, Charles, we had received an abundant supply of chicken. And of course, we're closed. So I said, Charles, I called him. I said, Charles, can I get this chicken? Can I cook it and fix it and give it out to the homeless? We got to feed them. There's nothing for them. He said, Thelma Louise, go do what you think you need to do. He said, yes, go feed them. So I did. And then I had to have help because we were just overloaded with it. So I called in the taco truck from Oakdale, because I heard he was feeding the homeless. Called him. I said, come over to our church. We have so much chicken over here. I said, and I'm willing to help you feed the homeless out here. So he came. And then Lori, Lori and I, we would go make great big bowls and, and big pans full of macaroni salad and take to the taco truck too as well to give to him with that chicken. And so there we were, doing the Lord's work. I found out that we were doing our Father's business where he wanted me to do. So it wasn't about myself thinking that one day I woke up and said, I'm going to go feed the homeless. It was the Lord who sent me there, and I want to give God all that grace for that. And then speaking of Lori, when I was turning my key into the church. Lori, will you come up here, please? Lori is my right hand. She's my right wing. I, I shouldn't say my right hand. Lori's left-handed. So, so we're like this. Lori's left-handed, but she's my right wing. So see this? She's on my right, and she can hang on tight with that left hand. Lori has always been there with me. The day that we handed in the church keys, I had no idea she was coming with me. It was just I that was leaving. And when I walked out, the door, after getting my keys in, Lori was standing by my car. And I said, Lori, what are you doing? She said, I'm going with you. I said, honey, don't give it your position here in the food pantry. You go back in there where you're needed. She said, no, I'm going with you. So Lori has always reminded me of the Bible of Ruth. Where you go, I go. Your people are my people. Your God is my God. And she's been with me ever since, and she's such a wonderful help that I could not have done all of this without her help as well as the Lord. So anyway, that is how I got started there. And then I started working with the police department. Call, I've called up on Chief Hensley over here so many times, trying to get these guys straightened out, you know? They were kind of hard at first. They didn't, they, they kept telling me I was going to get hurt, and I said, no, the Lord sent me out here, so I'm not going to get hurt. If he sent me to it, he's going to get us through it. So. But I called on chief several times. I had deputies on to come out, help me on occasions of finding some of the people that were missing. And then during that time, though, I was feeding. Do I still have time? I don't know. I went over my nine minutes. Sorry, guys. But so it was Thanksgiving of two thousand and twenty, and Lori, she had her family to be with. And I asked my daughter, I said, Dana, I, I feel really bad. The homeless are out there with no families to go to. They have no one to cook for. I said, can you help me cook up these turkeys? I had received a couple of turkeys. And she said, yeah. I said, I want to take it out and feed them. She said, okay, mom. So she helped me fix up a big dinner. And off to the park I went, set that stuff down. There was a couple of homeless sitting there. I said, go get, go get everybody. Go get your brothers. Go get your sisters. We're going to have a feast today. And I said, I'm going to feed you like the feast of a king in heaven. So they took off, I took off, and, and then I come back, and here comes Louis and one of the police, policemen in his car. Well, we were under the gazebo over here at the community center. And I knew I had not called in to ask if I could rent that place. So when Louis comes up and I see the police officer, I said, uh-oh, I'm in trouble. I'm in so much trouble. Guy goes, what do we do? I said, just everybody be quiet. Everybody calm down. Let me speak, okay? So Louis comes up, he looks at the officer, he said, it's okay, you can go. And I go, phew, that's a good one. So he come up, and he said, I've been looking for you. And I said, you have? What did I do wrong? He said, no, I've been hearing a lot about you feeding the homeless out here. And he said, I've been wanting to meet you. And I said, so now I found you. He said, is there anything that I could do? I said, sure. You want to serve some pie? You want to help me serve? He said, yes. So he come over and he helped me serve, and we were talking about, you know, things, and I let him know how I started there. And then we had another lady show up. I still don't know who that lady was today, but she pulled in, and she got out, and she said, I have nothing to offer, but I have hands. Would you like help? I said, yes, come on in here. So the three of us were able to serve out a great Thanksgiving dinner for the people. So I want to thank the city for offering, stepping up to help us. It was really getting hard to keep giving them water during the summertime. So I was putting out a lot of water. So finally, then I came and asked the city. They said they would help. So they've been donating water. Big Valley Grace has been coming over once a week, giving us food. Panera Bread, this is how I met my sisters from, from AVF here, from the American Veterans. Shirley, she started bringing, she contacted me, said, I heard about you. Would you like bread? I go, I get free bread from Interfaith. She said, no, I've been hearing a lot about you. She said, we get all this bread, and we want to donate to you. And I said, okay. So that's how I met Shirley in the beginning. And then she asked me to come over to meet the staff there, to meet Duke and Paige and, and Pam, bunch of the women jam. So I went, and we're in this board meeting. They have us come on in. I had no clue what's going on. Next thing I know, Shirley goes, you're up. Duke goes, Thelma, stand up. I said, what? And Shirley goes, you're up. Take the floor. I said, oh, my goodness. And I, he said, tell us. I said, well, I'm going to tell you the truth. So I ended up telling the same story about what the Lord, where the Lord had placed us, because it wasn't about me or Lori. It was about what God had given to us. And he placed something so incredible to my heart that it's very overpowering, very overwhelming. He showed me what love really is. We were able to love these guys out here. They didn't have trust for anyone. And they kept thinking I was going to get hurt. I said, no, once again, God's, and it's out here. And he wants you to know how much he loves you, and I love you. And I didn't care how they smelled, how dirty they were, or their appearance or anything. I would go up them and give them the biggest hug and let them know I love them. And I would tell them that God loves you even more. So that's how we got started. So I wanted to take, take the time right now and just thank everyone, and God bless each and every one of you. Oh, during the time too, I can't forget, where I was, I came to visit, came to visit the veterans after that meeting of talking. And then I was, I was talking with Duke Cooper, who, who had founded the place, who had got this going. And I was sitting in his office. He said, Thelma Louise, would you like to become a board member? And I said, I don't know. You know, I've got enough on my plate. And he said, no, he said, we want to help you, and I want to see no more money come out of your pocket. Because during that time, I was really putting a lot of money out of my pocket, even as much as buying clothes and shoes for the homeless. What they needed, I would take care of it. And the reason why too, that I was able to do it, is because my husband, he quit eating. And he went under hospice care, but he was at home, but he stopped eating. And that was for two and a half years before he deceased. But he said, no, I told him what I was going to do. He said, no, honey, you out there, and you feed those people. Let them eat for me. Let them eat for me. So anyway, I said, okay, well, I guess I'll come aboard then. So he huddled up the door. He said, girls, get in here. Get in the office real quick. And they come in there. He said, we have enough members right now for a board meeting to, to appoint Thelma Louise and on board. And they said, yeah, so thank you. Thank you, girls, all of you, for inviting us into your home. And I'm a long life member of family members of the servicemen. So I've heard many stories, and I know what it's about. During the time too, I'm still taking up time, guys, but during, during the time too, during two thousand and twenty, I had met three veterans here on the streets. And I would feed them, and sometimes I'd see them downtown. I'd tell them, come on in. I'm going to have a hamburger. No, that's okay. No, come in. I'm going to buy you a hamburger, because I'm going to, I'm going to eat right now. So they'd come in. I would talk to them for a while. So I was really happy that by two thousand and twenty-one, I was able to help all three veterans to get back home. They were able to leave California and go back home where they had come from. After helping them, that just, that just did something so amazing to my heart, knowing that I was able to help them. And that's what I'm out here now, is I want to help everyone wherever I come by and touch. It just means so much to me. And once we get this shelter going, I'm not stopping there. God's fit up my heart too, that I want to go start to Modesto and help finding the veteran homeless people out there, because we need to get them off the streets and get them into a better place. They need to be taken care of. Thank you. Thank you, Lord.
Again, congratulations. And on behalf of the city, we got you a little memento, so. If you guys would mind joining us for a photo, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, after that, I need to be short and sweet. My nominee was Charles Neal, and I'm going to tell you how I met Charles Neal. I was, it was several years ago, and I decided I wanted to run for city council. And I got a phone call, so I just didn't know what I was doing or what was going on. I got a phone call from this gentleman who sat and proceeded to grill me for almost two hours. And I ended up meeting Charles. We ended up having family members, our friends, and, and I think you guys went to school with my mom, and we had all this in common. So I met him several years ago, and he's just been a mentor, and he's been a pillar in our community. And I am just so very honored to want to call him my friend, and that we get to honor him tonight. Thank you.
Maybe I won't take up so much of your time. It's been a pleasure. And, and the city down here. I happened to get elected as a council member, and then at that time, it was the council would elect their mayors. And they elected me mayor for ten years. So. Yeah. I told you, probably would before you go back to Virginia. But then I, I came down and I was doing a prayer for the council until we had a new pastor at the Riverbank Assembly of God Church. And I told him, I said, come on, I'm going to give you a job. And he came down here with me about four or five times, and then now he's your pastor down here. And about two, about three weeks ago, I had a couple of strokes, and I couldn't walk around. So the veterans gave me a scooter. I mean, a, a power scooter. Not one that I ride, I mean, the one that ride around on. And I want to thank them for that, but I got to put a hitch on back of Shirley's car.
Just to let you know, Reverend Neal is still serving us. He's on our fire board. He's one of the commissioners there and we truly are director. We truly appreciate all your service for this, uh, great city. Uh, you've been, uh, part of it for over 40 years. And I thank you very much.
I guess I am next. Um, I'd like to introduce Joan Brister Giles. I've known Joan for about 25 years. Seems like it was just yesterday that I met her. Time really flies when you enjoy having someone who is not only just a, a good friend, but we are sisters in Christ. Um, she is a business owner, but most importantly, she is a board member of Central Valley Community Resources. Joan brings her expertise of, uh, her sound business decisions, her sense of humor and her compassion of helping others to our organization. Joan, we want to say thank you for everything you've done and will continue to do. And we appreciate you and thank you.
This is truly. This is truly a wonderful honor. I, I didn't expect this. When Darlene called me and said, we want to honor you, I said, for what? I don't know. I haven't done anything. I'm just a board member and, and, you know, that's it, you know? But, um, I, I'm, I'm happy to be here. I thank you all for everything. And it's just a wonderful honor. And this is my sister more than in Christ is, is like we are real sisters, you know? So thank you very much.
All right. So Sandra Sanchez is, uh, the person I want to honor today. Uh, unfortunately, she can't be here with us. She's recovering from a surgery. So send her all your well wishes. She's doing well. But, um, I just hope that everyone either has a neighbor like her or, um, is a neighbor like her. Because she is always willing to give. She's always, uh, willing to be a sister or a mother to somebody. And so, um, I've known her close to 10 years now. And, um, she's in my district and I definitely wanted to take the time to honor her. And, um, yeah, despite her not being here. So I was able to celebrate her a little early and give her a memento. And, um, again, send her all your well wishes.
All right, thank you all. No, mental health, you're last.
And just for the record, Mayor O'Brien did nominate, um, Mr. Arnold Setliff, uh, to be recognized today. He couldn't join us unfortunately, but, um, his gift is on the way as well.
All right, as you know, that there's green ribbons around, uh, town, people wearing green ribbons. Uh, this is in, uh, um, to commemorate, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month in May of 2023. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, whereas Family Support Network has been serving the Riverbank community since nineteen, 1993. And whereas our mission is to improve the emotional, psychological and social well-being of families and communities by providing increased access to resources and services that support mental health, prevention and early intervention, as well as health education classes, parent support groups and school readiness programs in English and Spanish. And whereas our vision is to sustain the ongoing advocacy for bringing, uh, official services to the underserved population in our community through locally accessible activities, bilingual staff and a trusted, safe place for individuals and families to ask for and receive information and support that is culturally appropriate. Whereas the green ribbon is the international symbol for mental health awareness. And whereas the lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals. Therefore, the main focus of this effort is to promote the importance of good mental health, well-being and stigma of reduction within communities, individuals and in families. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Riverbank and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Sign today. And I'd like to present this, you're going to have to help me on this.
No worries.
My memory's gone.
We have Mary Lou Ruiz with the Riverbank Promotoras, Shelley Lamar with Oakdale Family Resource Network and Dr. Janet Nunez Piñera with Behavioral Health.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Riverbank City Council members. Thank you so, so much and community members. Uh, I guess I'm a walking ribbon right now. And I'm proud to say so because the topic of mental health is so incredibly important. And to bring awareness to, um, if, of its importance is our, uh, focus for the community of Riverbank by bringing, um, collaborative efforts in our community. And I have to say how gracious the City of Riverbank has been to the promotor movement and mental health awareness. Um, and I thank you. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Mary Lou Ruiz, who is our support promotora, who brings mental health through support groups and classes. But I also want to give a huge, huge, um, gratitude, heartfelt thank you to our Behavior Health and Recovery Services partners, Janet and Kevin. I'm going to step aside. And Tamika and Edgar and Efrain and everybody who is close in my heart. And I thank you so, so much for your ongoing support to Family Support Network, the hospital and our focus. Thank you.
Well, I'd sort of, um, so thank you, uh, Mayor O'Brien and City Council and the City of Riverbank and the public for your ongoing support and collaboration to support us in this journey. Behavior health touches all of us, right? One in five Americans will experience, um, some form of mental health in a lifetime. And I can tell you, it touches my family, my loved ones, my friends, my neighbors. So this is going to take all of us. It takes a village, like they say, right? It's going to take all of us to work together, uh, so that we can bring an awareness. So I want to thank the mayor and the city and the council member again for proclaiming May it's a mental health awareness month. And Shelley, the promotora, we cannot do this without you. So I thank you for taking on this role and continuing to work with and engage our community to bring awareness. Um, like I said, all of us experience mental health in a lifetime. So if you're struggling with substance use disorder, mental health symptoms, you're not alone. I stand with you. Um, so I, I'm here on behalf of our Behavior Health Department. I'm the Associate Director for Behavior Health and Recovery Services for the county. So day in and day out, we have a prevention team working alongside our promotora, uh, uh, and our community partner to make sure that we educate the public how to access services and also educate the public about, uh, services that's available. So if you're struggling, please know that you're not alone. And our number is 888-376-6246. I think I have that right. So, uh, again, thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Uh, we do have one more. And you from Senator Gill. Come on, somebody, one of you come on up. Come on, you have one more. Thank you again. All right, at this point in time, I'd like Councilmember Hernandez, come on up here. We're going to proclaim Asian American Month. And, uh, she is, um, Vietnamese as well as, uh, Mexican, correct? Okay, good. I got that right. Get over here, please. Thank you. All right, the City of Riverbank Proclamation, Asian American, Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen Nakahama Mani Hiro to the United States on May 7th, 1843. But also the anniversary of the May 10th, 1869, completion of the first transcontinental railroad built on the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves in leading researchers in science, medicine, technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, distinguished lawyers, judges and government leaders in the arts, literature and sports as war heroes who defended our country from fascism and peacetime healthcare heroes currently on the front line of the pandemic. And whereas today, more than 20 million Asian American Pacific Americans live in the United States and through their actions make America a more vibrant, prosperous and secure nation. Whereas the City of Riverbank is committed to being a welcoming and inclusive place where all residents and visitors are safe to live, work and play. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim May 2023 to be the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and encourages everyone to commemorate this important occasion in recognition of the numerous contributions made by the Asian American and Pacific Islanders community locally, nationally and globally. Sign today. And so, here you go.
I'm just going to say quickly, I, uh, Jessica made a joke about me not wanting to be front center. And that's typically what I do is, is do work in the background. But, um, I take a lot of comfort in knowing that my story is a similar story to so many first generation and immigrant folks. And so, um, I want to thank you all for, for listening and for, for this honor.
All right, our last presentation of the night. Building and Planning Presentation.
Mayor and City Council, tonight we have a presentation by Donna Kenny, who is our Building and Planning Manager. Uh, she will provide an update on some important developments here in the City of Riverbank, as well as just some brief tidbits for our residents to keep in mind as they are working on their homes or in their yards, um, to be able to make sure that they're complying with all city ordinances. So take it away, Donna.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. So many times I get asked, what do planners, build, building inspectors and neighborhood improvement officers do? I'll start with planning first. So we get to the first look at any new proposal. Um, that's the most exciting part for me. Uh, we review proposals pursuant to the general plan, which is the city's 20-year vision for what we would like to see come to the city. Any specific plan that has its own special ordinances and, um, regulations and the zoning code, which actually implements the general plan. I distribute proposals that come in to staff and outside agencies to get comments. And I shepherd the proposal through, uh, public hearings. So we have some, um, houses coming your way on the horizon. These aren't even the houses that you're, uh, seeing built right now. But this is what's, um, coming this next year to two years. So we have Countryside Two, Ward Villas, Diamond Bar East, which you've been seeing the infrastructure go in on those. Uh, we've got a couple out there at Crossroads West, The Heritage, which is going, uh, north of the high school and Pocket Senior Housing too. So, uh, that's a couple hundred houses right there. These all have, um, approvals and are moving forward. We have some maps in progress that will bring us future houses. We have the, uh, Herrigfeld Final Map, which is about 300 houses, um, out by the Sports Complex. The Enclave Final Map, which is down at Kentucky and Claws. Countryside Three, which is also down there. We have a new project called Rivers Edge, um, which is asking for a vesting tentative map and about 36 houses. And then, um, Clarabelle and Roselle Project, which is new as well. Um, that's 144 apartments, as well as a gas station, a mini mart and a car wash. Those are all in progress right now. Um, additionally, uh, we are looking at doing, um, or approving or reviewing, excuse me, um, the Housing Authorities Community Center at Third and Stanislaus. Crossroads West has a major tenant one, uh, coming into the commercial area. We have a concierge. We have a concierge storage facility for, um, not only storing your items, but, um, they would have, um, a concierge service for, um, RV and and campers, uh, where you could drop off your vehicle, and they wash it and clean it and put it in the garage until you're ready to use it again. And we have, um, Monchin is building a showroom and, um, new offices. And also, we have the Riverwalk Specific Plan, which is an eighty percent senior housing project that is, uh, close to having an environmental document out. Next is building. Um, right now I have one building inspector who's a senior inspector. Um, hope to hire another one this summer, but we've had to bring on some, uh, consultants that are building inspectors to help us inspect all these houses. So building, um, as well as our plan checker, they review the proposals that come in, um, against the international and municipal building codes. They issue the building permits, and they conduct numerous inspections, and they coordinate their activities with fire and neighborhood improvement. So the reason why our inspectors are so busy is if you build a new house, it's a minimum of eight visits out there to conduct inspections. Pools, a minimum of four. Reriffing, at least two, and then solar panels, a minimum of two, depending on, you know, what sort of infrastructure you're having installed with it. Next, we have Neighborhood Improvement, which I also supervise. They review complaints pursuant to state and municipal codes. They conduct inspections for health and safety after a complaint is received. The focus tends to be on abandoned vehicles, weeds, hoarding situations, and illegal cannabis grows. They also assist the police chief and deputies with illegal fireworks citations. So they have an initial inspection performed, and if they find a violation, they send a letter. They do follow-up inspections. They provide extensions to people if they just call us and work with us. And then at the end, when they're ready to close the file, they do a final inspection. So did you know that storing bulky items on the street and sidewalk, such as basketball hoops, are prohibited? They can interfere with access by pedestrians, vehicle parking, traffic circulation, and garbage pickups. Did you know the fire season in California starts in the spring and continues through summer and fall? Keeping the grass and weeds in your yards short helps your neighborhood to remain an attractive and safe place. And did you know that Crossroads Specific Plan and the Crossroads West Specific Plan both prohibit RVs and similar vehicles from parking on the streets and in driveways? People always seem surprised at this one, although the information is out there. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? With all that, uh, building, how much property do we have left for development in within the city?
Well, not a whole lot. We do have Crossroads West. Um, that originally was three hundred and eighty acres, fifty-four of which is commercial, and a couple of subdivisions already moving out there. And we have a couple, um, properties on the east side that are underutilized, people who are within city limits but have ranchettes and and do not choose to, uh, develop at this time. Other than that, we have some commercial properties around town, but not a lot more for houses.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, at this time, we'll have public comment. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. After about ten minutes, I'm going to stop public hear- uh, comment, and we'll continue it later on after we do the public hearings. So do we have any public comments?
Janie Agers, seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto. As you may know, on April twenty-fifth, I submitted a written request to the city to place an urban limit initiative on the council agenda for tonight's meeting. In addition, I requested the council approve the provided initiative language that be placed on the November twenty twenty-four ballot. That request was not granted. Instead, it was suggested that I make my request during public comment. So tonight I'm requesting that the initiative be placed on the May twenty-third agenda and approved or placed on the November twenty-four ballot. With me tonight are several supporters of this initiative that we are referring to as Voters for Farmland. I'd like to see a show of hands from the people in the audience tonight that are here and supported this initiative. Thank you. Um, and and just a comment, uh, in in regard to the last, uh, presentation. Um, roughly fifteen hundred acres was added to the city's sphere of influence in twenty sixteen. Only four hundred acres of that has been annexed to the city thus far. So if I do the math correctly, there's about eleven hundred acres remaining that has yet to be annexed into the city that could be developed. Um, and tonight I'm here to provide another copy of what I submitted on April twenty-fifth to the city clerk for your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Karen Conrato. I live on Hoag Road. I would like to mention to all of you, there was an excellent article on the proposed Riverwalk project that was published this Sunday, this last Sunday, May seventh, in the Modesto Bee. So if you haven't seen it, I would recommend that you read it. It clearly states the multitudine reasons that Riverwalk proposal, proposed project should not exist. I am hoping all of you take the time to read it. So reasons we have previously mentioned include building, you know, building homes, businesses, et cetera, on prime agricultural land and on a flood plain. There's atmospheric rivers, which dump huge amounts of rain in a short period of time that are predicted to be get bigger and wetter um, than in past years. Obviously, we won't have them every year, but when we do, they're going to dump more rain. Snowfall was significant this year, which is also unpredictable. Um, the those people that live along the Stanislaus River were lucky this year. The New Maloney's dams was extremely low, thus allowing much capacity and absorbing the rain and snow melt. So, um, although the river rose near to the top along some of the banks, we did not experiencing the flooding that would have occurred had Maloney's been already full. We didn't experience the flooding that we they had up the north and to the south of us, the Twolonee and the San Joaquin. Um, please consider the impact this proposed project would have on the river, the river forest, and the wildlife corridors. There are concerns with urban sprawl, leapfrogging, and not using the poorer soils already available to the City of Riverbank for housing needs. Please research and consider all negative impacts this proposal, proposed project will have on this community, as well as your neighboring cities, Oakdale, Escondido, Modesto, to have, name the closest few, and it could go on to Ripon and Manteca if you have commuters. Please vote no on this Riverwalk proposal that when it comes in front of you. And as always, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hey, my name's Dan Whitstone. I live at seventy-eight twenty-four McHenry Avenue. Uh, my property overlooks the Riverwalk project, the river basin there. Again, my main point is, uh, you know, please look at where this is located, how far from the city it is. Uh, please, let's wait a few more generations before we build something that far out of out of the city limits. Um, and, uh, try and, uh, again, build, uh, east and other in the city limits property first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Evening, members of the council. Uh, Jacob Holder with Senator Alvarado Gill's office. Just, uh, wanted to provide a legislative update. Uh, Senator has a new bill, uh, SB eight twenty. Uh, this relates to cannabis enforcement and seizure of property. Uh, SB eight twenty adapts the same asset forfeiture provisions currently applicable to unlicensed manufacturing of alcoholic beverages. For example, moon chining to cover unlicensed commercial cannabis activities. Uh, SB eight twenty would bolster enforcement efforts against illicit cannabis operations by authorizing the removal of specified underlying infrastructure, such as specialized cultivation and manufacturing equipment used for unlicensed cannabis activities. This bill would would only apply to any unlicensed can- commercial cannabis activity with more than one thousand living cannabis plants. It would not give authority to seize real property. Should the owners of the property be, uh, as determined by a judge, rule the seized property was not in fact used for illicit commercial cannabis activity, all seized property would be returned to the owners. SB eight twenty would also bolster safe access to cannabis market by targeting enforcement against unlawful operators that undermine the legal marketplace and jeopardize the public health and safety. Uh, that concludes my legislative report. Any questions?
Any questions, Obeam? Let's make that a slot instead of public comment so we can have a conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. All right, seeing no more public comment, we're going to continue with the consult consent calendar. Uh, nine-one wave readings, nine-two approval of the City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board minutes for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have anyone, uh, wishing to pull an item or consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second to consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We're gonna wait for Mr. Neal. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you for being a friend. All right. Now we're gonna go to item ten-one, public hearing to adopt resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank annexing annexing of territory to a community facility district, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levies of tax to qualified electors. City of Riverbank Communities Facility District Number, uh, twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Two, and Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank declaring results of a special annexation election determining validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien service of Riverbank Community Facilities District twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Number Two.
Mayor Kathleen Klick, our Development Services Administration Manager, will provide the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So tonight is annexation number two, which is exciting. So in May of twenty sixteen, we first established, or the council first established, a CFD, um, which is a Community Facilities District. Um, our first annexation was in September of twenty twenty-one, and then tonight's annexation is annexing another four parcels into that district. So the purpose of a Communities Facilities District is to help the city maintain current service levels of service. Um, police services, parks maintenance, street maintenance, drainage maintenance, landscape maintenance. And without this ex- these extra funds, um, we definitely would not be able to, um, meet what the current demand is for our residents. So these are the parcels that are being annexed. We have parcel number one up at the top is at Claws and at the railroad tracks there, and then Sierra up to the north. That is where that's the storage, um, concierge storage facility is located that Donna had spoke to earlier. Um, the second parcel there is SCM Homes, which, um, is the heritage, and there's they'll be building homes there. And three and four at the bottom is Enclave, and they'll also be building homes there. That's on Kentucky. So with that, um, if there's any questions?
There any questions of Kathleen before we proceed to public hearing? Okay, thank you, Kathleen. At this time and place for the public hearing relating to the Community Facilities District Number twenty sixteen dash one, Public Services Annexation Two. This public hearing relates to the proposed annexation of territory to the district and calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of said district, uh, proposition regarding the annual levy of special taxes within the Community Facilities District.
Notice of the public hearing has been given in the form and manner as required by law.
At this time, um, is now is the time to take testimony from the public of a request that each person who speaks gives their name and address and state whether he is an owner of the property located within the proposed annexation boundaries or a registered voter residing within the proposed boundaries of such territory to be annexed. I open for public hearing. Seeing no public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak at all?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak on Zoom.
Okay. Uh, I would, do I close the public hearing now? I closed the public hearing. I would now ask, uh, staff to provide the final protest count of registered voters and owners, if any.
Mayor, there were eighteen number of votes were in favor of the ballot measure, and zero number of votes were in opposition of the ballot measure. There is at least two-thirds majority vote in favor of the ballot measure, the resolution declaring the election results and directing the recording of an amendment amendment notice of special tax lien shall be adopted.
Hey, is there any discussion on the proceedings or changes and modifications as appropriate, and explanation of alternate available? Anybody from the council that have any questions? Okay. If the City Council wishes to proceed the resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank annexing of territory to a Community Facility District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors, City of Riverbank Community Facilities. The election results, um, authorizing the levy of special taxes within the territories, eighteen number of votes were in favor, zero votes in opposition.
We need a motion.
Hey, at this time, um, uh, seeking recommendation of, uh, the annexation of territory to, uh, Annexation Two.
I'll make a motion that we accept the annexation on the the agenda item number ten point two as stated.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item ten-two, the first reading by title only, an introduction of the proposed ordinance, adding chapter one five zero point zero eight zero.
Sorry to interrupt. Sorry. With, I just want to make sure we were, um, motioning and approving for both resolutions.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
One five zero, uh, zero eight zero through one five zero dot one hundred, entitled vacant buildings to chapter one five zero, building regulations to title fifteen, land usage of the Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is an item that has actually been on our strategic plan, uh, since twenty nineteen. And as we're slowly working through these items, um, we do, um, ask that if you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any time, both the city attorney and I- Both the city attorney and I are available to answer those questions. But we did want to provide you with an opportunity to review the ordinance today, ask any questions. If there's any additional time that's needed to consider the ordinance, we can have a variety of options to be able to do that. So the vacant building ordinance, if you can move forward one slide. Its purpose is to eliminate blight in our community. The photo you see there is a photograph of an actual home that was located here in the city of Riverbank. Couple of months ago, the city council authorized the allocation of over thirty thousand dollars in funds in order to be able to remediate that one particular home. That home had been vacant for quite some some time. Unfortunately, we had transients who were starting to occupy the location. There was an accumulation of trash. And then there was two subsequent fires in that location. Code enforcement spent a large amount of their time trying to mitigate and trying to abate the property. Our legal counsel was asked to assist us in order to obtain warrants and inspection warrants to be able to access the property. And finally, the decision was made to abate it ourselves. And so at a cost of over thirty thousand dollars, and that does not include staff time that was spent or legal time spent. We finally abated the property. It is now a vacant piece of land that's owned by a bank who has chosen not to move forward with any proposed development on that piece of land. So these vacant buildings attract transients and criminal activity. This is in an older neighborhood off of High Street. We had numerous calls that we were receiving on a daily basis from all of the neighbors, not only to the city itself, but also to law enforcement. These areas become dumping grounds for junk and accumulation of debris, increased risks of fire, and it discourages economic development. Not only in residential areas where we see land depreciation and property depreciation because of these homes that are vacant, but also in commercial areas where you might see boarded up buildings. A new business who's looking to relocate, whether it be in downtown or another location in Riverbank, will most likely look at a boarded up building and not want to make an investment in that area. Next slide. So what's the goal and objective of the ordinance sits before you tonight? It's to prevent properties from becoming a burden to the city. It would make the property owner responsible for the burdens that they cause, including any costs associated with monitoring these vacant buildings. And next slide, please. So what is the proposal that we have tonight? It's a monitoring program. Any building that's vacant for more than ninety days. So this doesn't include a home that's someone is just moving out of and is going to be on the market the next day. This doesn't include a building who's about to be leased out to a new tenant. This is a building that's been vacant for more than ninety days. They're going to be required to register with the city. There's going to be a monthly fee that's assessed to them. This monthly fee is going to cover the cost of that monitoring program for staff to go out and investigate and do inspections if need be. What does this do? It builds some buy into those property owners. They're going to want to be able to move that property as quickly as possible. The property owner is going to have to be is going to be required to submit what we call a rehabilitation plan. This outlines how they're going to repair the premises if they happen to have been closed down because they needed repairs. And what is that expected time of completion? Next slide, please. And we do have some exceptions built in, as I mentioned. This is not going to be for that one house that's about to turn over where one resident has sold it to another or where they have a new tenant coming in. Or if an owner has obtained a building permit, perhaps they suffered a fire. And they come into closed services because they're going to be out of their home and the insurance company needs to come in and make necessary adjustments or construction in order to rehabilitate. This is not going to affect those residents. The building must meet all codes and is being actively market marketed. So if you have a building that goes vacant, but it's being actively marketed, it's up to code and there's no code violations that code enforcement has placed on there, then we can accept it out. You know, we don't require them to to have to register their building. If it's determined that the building does not contribute to blight because the the owner is actively maintaining it, maybe they're waiting for a it may could be a resident who is going on a long term trip. And but they're actively maintaining it. Their landscaping is, you know, doing well. The exterior of the home is being maintained. There's regular removal of trash or other debris. Or they're on top of removing any graffiti that me might be seen. Or there's active prevention of criminal activity. They've got a it's a secure location that nobody can access. Or there's cameras and alarms and they're not a burden on our law enforcement. Those types of properties would be exempt from having to register. Noncompliance, the owners would be issued a notice of violation. They would have thirty days to register for the program. And then failure to comply will result in administrative penalties of up to a thousand dollars. That certainly would be a huge incentive for a property owner who is not very motivated to want to move forward to either remediate the property or sell the property or, you know, be able to lease it out if it were a a commercial building. So the recommendation we do have for you tonight is to conduct a public hearing and consider a motion to a second reading. As we mentioned, there's always other options that are available. If there's any additional information that you need, that you would like us to be able to request. If there's a workshop that you would like us to hold in lieu of a second reading, we can do that as well. But as we mentioned, this is an item that has been on our strategic plan for quite some time. So we have discussed it at the council level and we're finally ready to move forward. And so the city attorney and I are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions, or members of the cell?
Just just one quick question. So the rehab plan, are you able to submit it online? Some of the property owner property owners don't live in the area. So is that going to be an option for them?
Most certainly. It's not going to be a huge detailed plan where they have to give us plans and specs, et cetera. Literally a one page detail of this is the work that's going to be done. Here's the expected completion date. Of course, if it requires a building permit, we would let them know at that point in time. Here's the process to obtain your building permit. Or if there's any other planning process that they need to undergo, we would make sure to coordinate that with them as well so that there's an understanding of a timeline and a process.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, excuse me. What about just vacant land? And, you know, I mean, it's got a bunch of weeds and looks like no one is, you know, we're talking about buildings right now, but what about vacant land?
So that still goes through our normal code enforcement process, the fire marshal. And there's very specific regulations regarding that at the state level as well. That's a health and safety issue. So that would still go through the same process. Trust me, code enforcement has a list of our habitual land pieces of property that we have to reach out to. They are they are definitely out there, but we can be a little bit more proactive with them because there's that component of, you know, potential fires.
I just want to. This is long, long overdue. We have houses that are vacant. I have no idea why they're they haven't been disposed of. The ones on Homeward that has its tree and weeds that you're constantly citing. One on Chancellor, right down there near you. And there's others throughout the city. And what what we want to do is have people take pride in the city of Riverbank. And if it's to force other people to take care of their property so we can continue to have pride and also continue with our our economic development, I think that is is the way to go. This isn't going to be a bullying tactic. This is one, you're not in compliance. Within thirty days, please let us know what's going on. And then we move forward if they do not comply or they have no plan whatsoever. And I'm for that. That way we can control some of the areas that are being purposely neglected. So at this time, is there and no further questions? I will open for a public hearing. I open the first reading by title only for the proposed ordinance adding chapter one five zero eight zero through one five zero dot one hundred.
We have one on Zoom, mayor. Good evening, the number ending in thirty one oh eight. Can you hear me? Hi, the number ending in three, one, zero, eight. Can you hear me? Hi, can you hear us? I think there might be a microphone issue. Hi, can you hear us?
All right, we're going to have a second readings if we can contact that person to have them make their comments at the second reading. Is that permissible? If if it goes through, yes.
Hi, we're gonna have to move on number ending in three, one, zero, eight. We can't hear you.
Any other comments? Seeing on I closed public hearing, I bring it back for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We approve item ten point two.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item ten, two, to push it to the next city council meeting. And a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eleven, one, a resolution to approve the appropriations of additional funds to the Claus Road curb and sidewalk project due to unforeseen conditions of the sewer line, relocation of the existing two inch traffic signal conduit and abandonment of existing one inch water service.
Mayor and council, your Public Works Director, Cody Bridgewater, for this presentation.
Mayor O'Brien, members of city council. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty three, city council awarded Hensley's paving and grading, sorry, general engineering a contract to complete the construction of the Claus Road curb and sidewalk project. The contractor recently started the clearing and demolition of the area and discovered three issues that need to be addressed before continuing. City staff and city engineer reviewed each item, made a recommendation, and the contractor submitted a proposed change order with costs for each item. So this is a portion of the plan of the area that Hensley's is contracted for. In the gray shading area is the new asphalt. You can see there, there's a couple of descriptions. The dark dashed line is the ten inch sewer line that we are proposing to have replaced. When this this was discovered by by Hensley's and city staff, it is a ten inch corrugated metal pipe. This type of pipe is typically used for irrigation. It has ridges on the interior where solids can accumulate. And there's really no record or history of when this pipe was installed. Upon opening the manhole at Stanislaus and Claws, we discovered that it's greatly deteriorated, rusted, and is actually flaking away. City staff can't even get in to maintain it right now because there's fear that if we put our truck into it to clean the line, it will just disintegrate and then we'll have sewage leaching into the into the ground in that area. So in order to avoid future issues with the sewer line, the conduit and the one inch water service, staff is proposing to replace those at this time. Being that we are going to be adding concrete and asphalt in that area. We don't want to get back in and have to reexcavate brand new surface improvements. So as we said, with the corrugated metal pipe, the cost from the contractor for the change order on the sewer line is a hundred and sixty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty seven cents. And staff is requesting an additional sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty seven dollars for contingency. And this will be funded from the sewer capital replacement fund. Here is a picture of the interior of the manhole at Stanislaus and Claws. You can see up there towards the top of the picture, that's the barrel of the manhole where the pipe enters and exits. And you can see it's starting to flake away there. You can see the nice trench that it's accumulated in the bottom where it's begun to wore through. So staff is proposing to replace this along with about three hundred and fifty feet of of pipe. It would be between Stanislaus and Claws Road to about fifty feet from the railroad tracks is what we're proposing to replace. The second item is a concrete encased conduit that follows the same direction as the sewer line and will actually need to be removed with the project in order to replace the sewer line itself. So this will need to be replaced as well. And the cost for the removal and replacement of the conduit is fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and ninety six cents. And staff is requesting an additional one thousand, five hundred and ninety in contingency. This will be funded from the sewer fund as well. The third item is the abandonment of an existing one inch water service that goes across Claus Road towards the concierge storage facility. This service was set to be abandoned during a later project phase, but being that we're going to be working there and its relative proximity to the sewer line, the conduit replacement, and it will also be placed under new sidewalk and new asphalt. Staff is recommending it be removed at this time at a cost of eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty four dollars and sixty six cents with an additional one thousand, one hundred and seventy eight dollars in contingency for a total of thirteen thousand from the water fund. So the original budget for this project was from the Mezorl Bike and Pedestrian Fund. It was a hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eighty seven dollars. The financial impact for the additional funds being requested will be two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and three dollars, which includes the ten percent contingency from the sewer fund and thirteen thousand from the water fund. This is in addition to the original hundred and eighty thousand and some change that was already appropriated for the project. So staff recommends city council consider the budget amendment of two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and four dollars for the sewer fund to repair the sewer line removal and installation. And relocation of the existing two inch traffic signal conduit and thirteen thousand to the water fund for the abandonment of the existing one inch water service. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions before we open it up? I have a question. Can we apply for measure L funds from STANCOG that to replace the what we're doing, you know, for the sewer fund? Okay, that's that the the head shake was no. So that's my that was my question. Okay. All right, I will open it up to the public. Do we have any public comment? Saying no, I'm going to bring it back for consideration. By the way, I'm before we do. I'm surprised you don't have sewer leakage now with that condition of the pipe. Not that I'm wishing that we do.
We'll find out a lot when we remove it.
Okay, and as you are scoping it out, can you scope further down to see if there's any additional?
Let's go further north.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Maybe accept item eleven point one.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second for item eleven point one roll call.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. At this time, I'm going to ask for staff comments unless we have additional public comment. I did push it over, so I'm just asking. No? Okay, so we're gonna go to staff. No? Okay, so we're going to go to staff comments.
So Mayor and City Council, I'm very pleased to report that our facade improvement program is now active. Uh, we did what I'm calling a soft opening of this grant program. We actually mailed letters to each of the property owners within the downtown specific plan. Number one, because we felt it gave us a greater opportunity to be able to explain the program rather than a simple social media posting. And we also gave them copies of the program guidelines themselves so that they could see what the process would look like. We've had a wonderful response and I'm really excited at some of the proposed changes um, that will be coming forward from this program. Um, so everybody's busily working on putting those plans together and I'm sure I'm going to get phone calls soon uh, to start setting up meetings. So we're really excited about that. But tomorrow we will launch our actual um, social media and webpage. Um, that will go live in the event that there's any um, property owners who may not have received the information as of yet. We do have it available on our website.
Thank you. Is that it for staff comments?
That's all for me.
Okay, Councilmember Jones Cruz, please.
I have nothing tonight, thanks Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Uribe.
Downtown Market, Leon.
Look out the window.
Tonight's the first night of the downtown market. Maybe we'll get out of here in enough time for me to go get one of those burgers I've been on Ballyline, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so yeah, so the month of May is uh, full of other days of, uh, days and weeks of appreciation. So I just want to quickly recognize. Uh, heroes in different fields from the Military Appreciation Month, uh, Firefighters Day just passed, uh, National Nurses Week, Police Week, uh, EMS and National Foster Care. Uh, all leading up to the big event at, at the end of the month for Memorial Day. Uh, I'm looking forward to that. I'll be attending the Stanislaus Latino Chamber of Commerce Installation Dinner this Saturday, uh, May thirteenth. Uh, and to all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day.
Great, uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
I just want to mention that it is exciting to see all of the preparations on Roselle Avenue for our new sidewalks that are coming in. And um, I thank you for, to everyone that participated in our Love Riverbank. Especially those that helped me with the Honor Our Heroes Project. We had cards, we had cookies and lots of smiles. And Chief, I still have some more cards for you to deliver. Um. The uh, Historical Society is having their after Mother's Day omelet breakfast that will be on. Sunday, May twenty-first from eight to one, it will be at our community center. Um. Yeah, it's going to be another good omelet breakfast day. And um, our Shaw meeting, the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance meeting is tomorrow at ten 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 street. Everyone is uh. Invited if you'd like to come and find out what we're doing in the county uh, region wide. So we're trying to tackle the, our homeless um. Issues and situations that we have so that we're trying to work together instead of everybody just, each city doing something separate on their own. Uh, and congratulations to all of our graduates. I'm very proud of our graduates and just want to say Happy Mother's Day to everyone too. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Um, I just want to say thank you for a great Love Riverbank event. It was awesome to go out there and then support and be at the library dusting and picking up garbage at Jacob Myers. Um, and, and for the entire day really with all the stuff and all the hard work that, that was put together. Um, yeah.
Well, thank you. I want to echo the Love Riverbank. You did a fantastic job and your enthusiasm, your enthusiasm infected almost the entire city. Um, and I, I appreciate that. Uh, Love Riverbank was a huge success because of you and your efforts. I got to tour the day use facility at the Sierra House. That's coming along. I haven't heard of any problems with PG&E. So I'm assuming those were resolved. If not, I have a, a, a contact that would like to talk to me at the CPUC. So let's use me. Um, out at the LRA, um, there's some property that is going to be um. Coming our way is one in one A, which is, will be bordering Clarabelle. Uh, should be coming our way prior to the end of September, which is required by the county. So the, the uh, army is working hard for that and we should be getting updates on that uh, periodically. Um. I don't, um, um. Parcel two should also be coming. And that fact, the, for everybody on the council. There should be an article in the paper or a, a notice in the paper, might as well be. So you may be getting some comments. This is claimed property, though you, you see like articles in the, might as well be that are partially accurate. Uh, and people take it as gospel, some is going to say it's contaminated. It is not. So um, just to let you know, parcel two is where the um. Ethanol plant will be constructed. The other item is coming in, coming to a date near you uh, for the council. We should be getting the EIR shortly. Within a week or two. And then after we're done making our, our read and any questions you may have. Then it will be released, I believe, to the public. So that is, I'm, I'm pushing that as well as trying to push. The other project uh, that um, is on our west side. Okay, with that, um, we are going to adjourn. Our next city council meeting will be May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Thank you and have a great Mother's Day.